Morning, it's Tuesday, August 23rd, 9:30 a.m. Please arise and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'll start with a prayer, please. Heavenly Father, we beseech your divine guidance in this meeting. Keep us ever mindful of our obligation. Grant us, dear Lord, wisdom, tolerance, and courage that we may well serve our county and fulfill our trust. Amen. All right, Dan, we've got minutes, August 16th.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Move to second, any discussion or changes? Roll call, please.
Swedick?
Yes.
Hudson?
Yes.
Hambley?
Yes. All right. Next, open up for public comment regarding any of our pending resolutions. Any public? Hearing none? We'll start moving into resolutions. And the county engineer's office, Dan Becker. Good morning.
Good morning, Dan.
Let's see what we have today. I've got two resolutions for your consideration. First resolution is the necessity to close state road between Lyonswood and Eastwood Road. And the second is approving the final change order for the pavement painting, pavement paint markings on various county roads between J.D. Striping and our county engineers, or county commissioners, I'm sorry, and then the weekly permits.
I'll make a motion to approve the two resolutions.
Second.
Move to second, any discussion? Roll call, please.
Swedick?
Yes.
Hudson?
Yes.
Hambley?
Yes.
Thanks.
Thanks, Dan. Sanitary engineer, Jeremy.
Morning, everyone.
Good morning.
Morning, Jeremy.
Morning. I have cinco resolutions for your consideration today. The first is authorizing the sanitary engineer to apply for the 2023 grant monies available for the replacement repair of failing septic systems through the Ohio EPA Water Pollution Control Loan Funds. The second is authorizing the sanitary engineer to obtain easements for the Grafton Road Water Main Replacement Project. The third is authorizing the final adjusting change order for the Medina County Sanitary Sewer Rehabilitation Project 2021. The fourth is authorizing the sanitary engineer department to purchase a four-wheel-drive pickup truck. And the final is approving the amount of unpaid utility bills for the Medina County sanitary engineer and providing for their certifications in accordance with sections 6103.02 and 6117.02 of the Ohio Revised Code.
I'll make a motion to approve the cinco resolutions.
Second.
We're gonna be bilingual here. It's just fine. Okay. Any objections or any questions? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Swedick?
Yes.
Hudson?
Yes.
Hambley?
Yes.
Thank you.
Holly, Human Resources Director. Should we have kept consistent? C, C, C. Nevermind.
Thanks, Jeremy, for the fun. On personnel changes resolution today, we have two new hires, one at Office for Older Adults, one at County Home, seven rate increases, four at Job and Family Services, one at Office for Older Adults, one in Commissioners, and one in Sanitary, one promotion in Sanitary, six transfers between agencies for stormwater management, two leave of absence in Sanitary, return from leave in Maintenance, and a paid administrative leave at County Home, and three resignations, one at Office for Older Adults, one at Job and Family Services, and one at County Home.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Move to second, any discussion? Roll call, please.
Swedick?
Yes.
Hudson?
Yes.
Hambley?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thanks, Holly.
Thanks, Holly.
Stephen.
Maintenance.
Good morning.
Good morning, Stephen.
I have one resolution for your consideration today. It's awarding and accepting the bid for the Medina County Jail Stormwater Management and Asphalt Replacement Project. It will be coming out of the ARPA dollars.
We've already allocated, right?
Correct.
I think so.
Okay, I will make a motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, move to second, any discussion?
Does this include the entire parking lot all the way from the juvenile detention center all the way down and around behind where they parking is for the...
The Sallyport?
Yeah.
Yes, it includes all parking lots at the jail facility. So, the, on Independence Drive, you have the visitors' parking lot.
Right.
You have the employee parking lot on the north side of the jail. It includes all of that and includes where they park all of their sheriff vehicles behind the fence. It will include redoing the gates of the fence, and then it'll bring it all the way around to the Sallyport. They'll be tearing out all of the asphalt. They will be putting in underdraining and then allowing all of that water to stay off of the parking lot. Hopefully, managed a little bit better than 20 years of lifespan.
Right, right.
Did the bid come in at close to what you estimated?
Um, yes and no. We originally thought it was gonna be around $850,000, and then we started getting the contractor or the architect and engineer started coming back with numbers, and they came in at 1.3. So, our bid came in lower than our estimated that went out for advertising.
And are we using the whole 1.3 out of ARPA? Yes.
Okay, yeah, to be clear, this awards to Ohio Paving and Construction Company and $1,266,195.
That is correct.
Okay, all right. Any other questions, discussion? Roll call, please.
Swedick?
Yes.
Hudson?
Yes.
Hambley?
Yes.
Thanks, Stephen. Administrator. Morning, Scott.
Good morning, Scott. I have four resolutions for you today. The first resolution is authorizing a contract for the provision of services to implement a voiceover IP telephony system from Medina County. We received nine proposals. One of the proposals did not meet the RFP requirements, so we have eight listed here. First come had the lowest and best at $131,028. This should save us actually about $120,000 to $150,000 a year once this is implemented. The second resolution is authorizing a request for proposal for moving services for Medina County Courthouse Project. We've been working with NV5 on the move. We've interviewed all the courts. We've toured the courthouse, and they went ahead and they put together an RFP requesting the moving services. The third resolution is authorizing Medina County Sheriff's Office to purchase seven new 2022 police explorers and one 2022 F-150 responder. As I mentioned last week, Sheriff Greis believes that there may be some vehicles available through Montress Ford, and because of the current situation of vehicles, we thought if they're available, we better attempt to buy them. So, this gives him the authority to purchase those should those become available.
And Scott, that's through the state purchasing contract, right?
Yes, yeah, that's through state purchasing. And the final resolution is accepting proposal for the construction of Medina County Shooting Range to be utilized and managed by the Medina County Sheriff's Office. This is a project that we've been working on probably for the last, oh, three years, I think. I think it started under Tom Sheriff Miller. And this, Terry has been able to garner private donations as well as a donation, our money's being transferred by Dave Wadsworth through the Auto Title Fund to cover the cost. They're actually looking at this in different phases or different portions. This is for the actual labor at a cost of $49,000. This is for all the grading and laying, and the drainage and all the grading work. Then we have materials where there will be getting materials. Some of the materials will be donated, some will be purchased. Those will be through different sources. That's estimated to be about $44,000, and then you've got about $7,000 in actual design by the engineer. So, this is accepting the proposal from...
Kleins.
Uh, Kleins, yeah, for the $49,000.
I'll make a motion to approve the four resolutions.
Second.
Move to second, any discussion?
The, the range proposal, Scott and I, and Sheriff, over time, have looked at probably four or five different locations around the county. And, and the location by the county engineer's office, we think is the best location for it, and it is most central in the county and also is very accessible by the Sheriff's Department, just down the road, so.
Very good. Roll call, please.
Swedick?
Yes.
Hudson?
Yes.
Hambley?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thanks, Scott. Assistant County Administrator. Good morning, Amy.
Good morning. I have 18 resolutions for your consideration this morning. The first one is amending the appropriation measure resolution. The second is amending the 22 appropriations resolution by transferring appropriations. The third is expenditure adjustments for various funds. Fourth is revenue adjustments for various funds. The fifth is the creation of the Drug Task Force Pending Forfeitures Fund and authorizing appropriations. The sixth is the creation of the Stormwater Division and authorizing appropriations. The seventh and eighth resolutions create funds and authorize appropriations for the Adult Probation Department. This is for fiscal year '23 for their Drug Court docket and their Mental Health Court docket respectfully. The ninth is the creation of the Family First Council, ARPA, Early Intervention Fiscal Year '23 Grant Program Fund and authorizing appropriations. Tenth and eleventh are creating funds for the Juvenile Court Division and authorizing appropriations. They're for Drug Court and the Juvenile Court Remote Technology Grant respectively. Twelfth is creation of the OCJS Sheriff Office American Rescue Plan Grant Fund and authorizing appropriation. Thirteenth is authorizing the purchase of 6,800 gallons of regular unleaded gas for the engineering center. That one went to Centerra for $2.8025 per gallon for regular unleaded gas. The fourteenth is authorizing the Medina County Emergency Management Agency to accept a donated 2004 Cargo Pro Box trailer from the Earhart York Fire Department. Fifteenth is allowing for salvage disposal of two county vehicles from the Medina County Sheriff's Office. Sixteenth is allowing expenses of county officials. Seventeenth is allowing expenses of the county engineer. And the final resolution is approving claims for the week in the amount of $2,730,750.27.
I'll make a motion to approve the 18 resolutions.
Second.
Move to second, any discussion? Roll call, please.
Swedick?
Yes.
Hudson?
Yes.
Hambley?
Yes.
Thank you.
Next, department updates. Transit. Morning, Shannon.
Morning. Before I get into the department, I have one resolution for your consideration, authorizing the Medina County public to participate in the Ohio Department of Transportation Cooperative Purchasing Program per section 5513.01 of the Ohio Revised Code.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Move to second, any discussion? Roll call, please.
Swedick?
Yes.
Hudson?
Yes.
Hambley?
Yes.
Our departmental update, ridership continues to be a little down when it comes to our fixed route. It's obviously up by demand services. Total ridership is maintaining, but most, more folks are traveling a little farther outside of their area this month, so it did affect some of our numbers. Still maintaining our cost. Fuel continues to be a concern, but not as much lately when it comes to gasoline. We are gasoline. When it comes to our ridership for the, our services, our county services, it seems to be returning a little bit. I'm happy to see some of the folks traveling again that may have been not traveling things. I see an upturn when it comes to our services, maintaining those services. That also brings some interesting numbers when I start looking at trip purpose, and we don't prioritize trip purpose, but for the first time since I've been here with Medina in the last three years, work by percentage, by trip purpose, work reached a 41% of our service level, and medical was 35. So, we're taking a lot of folks to work. I've talked to a lot of the folks going to work. Wanting to be at work on time is a big deal for our people, imagine that. So, it's, I'm happy to see that we're providing those work services a little bit more. It's, the rest of it is spread out between shopping and recreational and personal, but that work, we're really paying attention to that.
Does that include the ACE taxi transportation, or is that just our...
That's just our service.
Just our service, okay.
That's more medical outside the county.
Right, okay. And then I know, we got JFS too, but that's what I was wondering, if those get included.
Within the county, 41% of our passengers are going. So, that's a positive number.
That's an interesting stat.
There it is. Yeah, I, I had to run the numbers and had my staff run it again to make sure, so. We are, we do have an external, an internal job posting for a road supervisor position right now, so we're working to fill that right now with Holly's help. We've hired a couple folks. One gentleman has started. He's been with us a couple months, doing well. We have another person starting soon, so we're seeing some positive turn there, too.
Good, great.
And also mention our strategic planning. You'll see a technical document coming to you soon prior to our bird retreat scheduled for the 14th of September. We review this document in great detail during our weekly meetings. It's analytical as far as demographics, travel patterns, really good information about where we are right now, and some recommendations about where we could be. So, if you had to say, you know, where we're at, we've done a lot of good analysis. We plan to do a lot more community outreach to make sure we get the pulse of what everybody is looking for, but it's, it told us a lot of things that we knew and some things we didn't, which is what I was hoping for.
All right.
The technical document will be in great detail, 30-plus pages, a lot of information prior to the retreat, so you have a chance to download it and figure out some things for yourselves and have the right questions. And we really hope that with our stakeholders involved, a lot of stakeholders, which I'm happy about, we gotta keep them engaged, so we're gonna get some positive results from it.
Excellent, very good.
Thanks, Shannon.
Thanks, thank you. Job and Family Services. Morning, Debbie.
Good morning. First, two resolutions for your consideration this morning. The first is just an amendment...
It would be dose, right?
Dose. Should've thought of that.
Okay.
Never gonna be the same. An amendment to our PRC plan for Child and Family Services, and then the next one is just authorizing two contracts for foster recruitment and retention training.
I'll make a motion to approve the two resolutions.
Second.
Move to second, any discussion? Roll call, please.
Swedick?
Yes.
Hudson?
Yes.
Hambley?
Yes.
And then agency updates. I'll go agency-wide first. As you know, Community Action is going to be taking up residence in our ground floor, so hopefully that will be happening soon. So, to prepare for their move-in, JFS had to move out of certain areas. So, there were a lot of what I called first dominos. One person needed to move so somebody else could move, so somebody else could move, so somebody else could move. So, we're reconfiguring printers and data lines, so it was just, it's a lot of work just to move staff, you know? I think the first impression was like, oh, well, just, you're gonna move to that office and that's it. And it quickly became apparent that that was not the case. In addition, maintenance needed to come and tear down some cubicle walls that we didn't need and replace them or reconfigure them. They descended on the agency yesterday and moved fast, so Stephen's team is doing an A-plus job. And I need to give a shout-out. You have cubicle walls up for, we've been in the building for 22 years, and some of those cubicle walls have been there for maybe as long as 22 years. So, when you pick up and move them, you find all sorts of things that have fallen behind desks, and there's dust bunnies and things like that. And we had planned on vacuuming this morning after, you know, it was quiet and no phone calls were being made or anything like that, and we came in and Rob, the cleaning person, had swept last night, so. And we didn't expect him to do that, we didn't ask him to do that, so props to Rob for taking care of that for us. But the agency is still open for business even though the first and second floors are in complete disarray. Staff are still, we made sure that when we moved staff, that they had printers and data lines available so they could get up and running as soon as possible, so.
When is it predicted that Community Action will move in?
I have sent them the lease there. They took it, he took it to his board, and then they're now having their legal counsel look at it, so I think as soon as they do their checks and balances, I would hope by the end of the year, so sooner rather than later.
Super.
But we'll be, I think we'll be ready for them by the end of this week.
Great.
So, nice, nice progress in that area. For the Child Support Division, I continue to gather a work group that consists of child support staff and managers, just continuing a conversation about how do you do your work? How can we do it better? Where are we doing great and where are we needing some help? We've somewhat identified some needs for a defined approach to training staff as well as a curriculum of policies and procedures. For a while, it was, it was management was taking that on, and then they would mentor a couple of staff members, so there just wasn't an organized way of training those staff members, and I couldn't disagree more with that. So, we identified that and then requested a new position be changed from a support officer one to a training position, so that'll be posted soon. So, hopefully, we can continue to educate staff and make them more efficient. And I've also offered some, what I call desk time to staff, is I've asked for some volunteers. I didn't told anybody, but I asked for volunteers, "Help me come and sit with you for a few hours." You can't have me all day, but for just a few hours so I can sit with you and better understand the way you work and how you do it, and I can ask questions about... I often say I love the question, "Why?", and it's not like, "Why?", hands on my hips, it's "Why?", finger under my chin, like, help me understand. So, we can, I can continue to help the division work more efficiently. So, work continues in that area. The public assistance, the Department of Medicaid is changing their managed care plans, and it's called the Next Generation Medicaid Managed Care. So, that enrollment is happening now through the end of November. I have a draft email to Brian to include in the next Commissioner's newsletter to tell our community members about how they need to enroll in those new managed care plans, and then also a draft release for our local media outlets, too. We'll update the agency's website and our Facebook page to share that information, too. If no one selects a plan, they'll remain in their current plan, but there's more options now. There used to only be five managed care plans, now there's seven. So, it opens up a lot of opportunities for our members. And then Child Protective, the resolution you've just approved, thank you very much, is gonna provide continued training and support to our current foster families as well as those that are newly onboarding. It's called Trust-Based Relational Intervention, and it's just helping our foster families deal with some attachment disorders or issues with children as well as fear-based responses. So, it's, it's just helping those foster families deal with some of those perplexing behaviors when a children is suffering trauma. Why, I'm just asking you to go to school, help me understand, you know, why this has become such a big deal. So, we're hoping that it continues to support our foster families and their amazing efforts. Those are my updates.
Okay, I did wanna, I guess, give a shout-out and thank you. There was a table at the Business of the Barn, Northern Medina County Business Alliance. This was at Maple Side last week, and you had two staff there, basically staffing between, I think, 3:00 and 7:00 o'clock as it went on to answer people's questions, but also help promote the foster parent activities. And I just wanted to thank you for doing those community outreaches. I know it may not create a lot of numbers, but it's the qualitative context, too. In other words, you, all you need to do is pick up one or two or a couple from those kind of outreaches, and that obviously has significant, I'll just say, benefits as you go down the line. But I just want to thank the staff for being there and spending that time.
Appreciate it. Thank you, I'll pass it on to them.
All right.
Thank you.
Thanks, Debbie.
Thanks.
Next, public comment. Anyone here from the public? Just, I know we, why don't we go ahead and discussion session then? Why don't we go ahead, Indig Defense Reimbursement Rates? We have a representative from the Bar Association. If you wouldn't mind coming up, and we can talk about that resolution.
Good morning, Melissa.
Good morning. Thank you so much, all of you, for having me here.
Sure.
My name's Melissa Pizak, for those of you that do not know me, and I work for the Medina County Prosecutor's Office currently, and I'm the president of the Medina County Bar Association. You might also recognize my last name from my dad, who's been an attorney 40-plus years. Rhonda used to work there, so. So, I'm here today on behalf of the Bar Association to request a resolution to increase court-appointed counsel fees for compensation for those attorneys, and also to increase the caps as well to be commensurate with that increase. We are requesting $75 for in-court and $75 for out-of-court. We did submit a formal request on behalf of the Bar Association, so I just wanted to thank you for considering all that information and making your decisions such as the inflation rates, the information regarding the last time that the rates were raised, the history of that, and what other counties contiguous to Medina County are making or giving to court-appointed counsel, which are 75, including Cuyahoga County, which recently passed a resolution, it's my understanding, for 75 in-court, 75 out-of-court for most matters. Death penalty cases, I think, is even more than that. Wayne County has 75 in-court, 75 out. Summit County, 75 in, 75 out. Ashland as well, and Lorain County. Also, there's 52 counties in Ohio that have that rate of 75 in-court and out-of-court, at least for, for at least some matters. So, we are requesting that Medina County follow suit in that regard. We also would like for, for you to take into account that, it's come to the Bar Association's attention that the court-appointed counsel availability for the list of available attorneys has declined, and we believe that one, at least one of the prominent reasons for that is that surrounding counties are making, are giving out 75 in, 75 out. And we want to make sure that we have, that we're appropriately compensating our good attorneys that we have. We want to keep our good ones and also continue to draw good attorneys to provide adequate, competent representation to our, our community members. So...
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you very much.
All right, I know we, go ahead. You met with the group, you and Scott?
Well, I have talked to Judges Collier, Dunn, and Schaefer. I have not run into Judge Kimbler yet, but they're all supportive of increasing the rate. And as Melissa mentioned, a lot of it is competitiveness with other counties and being able to attract attorneys into the county to come in and provide the representation, so going up to 75 and being on parity should help.
So, I know you mentioned the caps, and that was one of my initial questions when we, at some of the emails, is the resolution needs to also reflect changes in the caps, because if your base rate's increasing, obviously, the cap also. And so, the rates we have in the current resolution reflect that prior rate, correct? So, we're gonna have to increase those commensurate with that. So, I guess over this week, we'll have to prepare that. I'm certainly on board with increasing the, the per hour for the representation as well as increasing the caps to reflect that, so that we're not expecting to spend fewer hours for felonies at a higher rate. So, at this point, we have to go with those anticipated caps, I think.
I am fine with the increase in both areas.
All right.
So, we'll work on this, and hopefully by next week, we'll be able to then have the new numbers and be able to appropriately pass it next week, then.
Right.
Okay.
Thank you all so very much.
Thank you.
Thanks, all right, good. Next, I believe, Nate Emppich, Medina County Park District.
Good morning, Nate.
Good morning, Commissioners. Medina County Park District is making a big announcement today, and that news is that we are in receipt of our largest-ever gift of land in our 57-year history. Ms. DeeDee O'Neill has donated to the Park District 203 acres in Westfield Center and Westfield Township, so it will be protected in perpetuity as a nature preserve. So, we have pledged to DeeDee that we will begin developing public access to the property no later than the summer of 2024. We're really excited about the donation, of course, and DeeDee's enthusiasm, and this will no doubt be another great location that will inspire residents for generations to come. So, wanted to share that outstanding with, outstanding news with you all today.
Congratulations.
So, where's it located at in Westfield?
It is, it straddles Westfield Center and Westfield Township. It's located off of Greenwich Road.
Greenwich Road.
Yeah, it's about a mile west of the circle in Westfield Center.
Got it, okay.
And it actually, the backland actually goes up into Westfield Center, the village.
Oh, okay, all right.
There's actually a pond that is behind DeeDee O'Neill's house that is inside the village, and years ago, I used to take the Boy Scouts out, and we'd camp on the pond and do shooting exercises and different things that subsequently found out was all not entirely legal because it was inside the village.
In the village.
We thought a lot of it was in the township. Come to find out, it wasn't. So, but...
What's the statute of limitations on this thing?
It's passed. So, but DeeDee and Rory, who has passed, have been very, very generous to the county and to the village overall, and I would personally like to recognize both of them for their contribution.
So, Bill obviously knows a little bit about the property. I should have brought a volunteer application for you, Bill, because we will definitely need help. But it's a great property. DeeDee's just a wonderful person, and she has said many times how she wants other people to enjoy the property as much as she and her family and friends have for fifty-plus years. So, we'll be making that announcement today.
So, most of it will be passive recreation and as well as conservation?
Correct. Right, hiking trails. And she already has a nice little loop of trails that she and her dog walk just about daily.
Really?
And a nice fishing pond. So, the improvements that we will make will be for public parking, a restroom, some trail improvements, fishing access, those sorts of things. But we'll be working with her on the concept plan, really starting to finalize that beginning next month.
That's awesome. Congratulations.
Yeah, thank you. Thanks for your time.
Thank you, all right. Awesome news. That was great. All right. Discussion. Scott, do you have anything for us? Okay. Bethany?
Sure, come on up.
So, we've been talking about our economic development successes over the past couple of quarters, and one of the projects which has been a big success for Medina County and one that the Medina County Port Authority has supported is the Westfield Commerce Center, which is being built at the site of the old truck wash in Westfield Township. And I think you might have just discussed it last week. The developers of that project have been running into, I guess, a little bit of a wall with TC Energy, which is a natural gas pipeline company. And they have reached out to our office and asked us to work with our elected officials to support, I guess, breaking through some of the barriers that have been put up. And they're looking for a letter of support from the Commissioners to express the importance to the county of the economic development, impact to our community, and your support for opening the doors of communication with the pipeline company so that we can overcome some of the barriers and help the project to move forward. So, I will have a draft for you of a letter, if you would be kind enough to consider approving that and getting that sent on to the appropriate officials.
Go ahead.
Yeah, this is, has the potential to stall the project if they can't get some cooperation with TC Energy on defining, more clearly defining an easement. And so far, TC Energy has not been cooperative in even discussing the issue. So, I think if we can draft a letter and express our concerns and our support for the project, it may help.
So, this is a transmission line that goes across, and it appears, I guess, corporate, some corporate attorney in Chicago has decided that the conditions of the easement are, need to be better defined or not even discussed, and creates a problem for the project.
Right. So, the easements were signed, from what I could find, back in nineteen, early nineteen-eighties, and they were blanket easements. So, it basically gave an easement over the entire property.
Right.
And there's one line, and I believe it's a four-inch line that runs east to west, across the southern part of the property. It actually goes through Westfield Center, through the golf course, through several streets, and out the west side of the village. And all they want to do is say, "Hey, you have a pipeline, and you have a sixty-foot or whatever wide easement to maintain it."
Right.
So, it seems to be a very simple matter. But if TC Energy isn't coming to the table to even talk about it, it makes it difficult to try to get it resolved.
You can understand the developer's concern, that if they don't try to contain some of the qualifications around the easement, then at some point in the future, you've got, you know, half a million square foot building, and they say, "Oh, you know what? We want to, we want to expand the pipeline in the other direction," and you have to go right through your building. I mean, I don't think that would happen, but obviously, the developer wants to make sure that those concerns are not worrisome in the future.
Agreed.
I'm in favor of the letter.
Oh, yeah.
Thank you. All right, I will get a draft over to your office.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. All right. Amy?
And I will apologize in advance if Stephen talked about some of this when I had to leave the room for a minute. First up, budget hearing schedules. We sent those out to all the departments to see if they could RSVP for those specific dates and times. There were a few departments that needed to be shuffled based on scheduling conflicts, so we're finalizing that now. So, I should have that schedule available to you by the end of the week. The dates didn't change. Everybody was able to fit in within that Monday, Tuesday, October third and fourth, and Tuesday, Thursday, the eleventh and thirteenth. So, thanks for your patience as we work on that. The parking lot resolution that went on today for the Sheriff's Department for Ohio Paving and Construction Company, that's funded by ARPA dollars. We got the clearance through our legal counsel, so I'll have a resolution next week that just tidies that up, that shows that source of funding for that project. And Stephen had also given us change order number two for the county home, so you'll see that come forward next week. It's just an additional nineteen-some thousand to finish ductwork that they hadn't included in the original.
And that's ARPA money, too.
That is also ARPA money. We'll talk about it more, of course, this afternoon in the ARPA, or later this morning in the ARPA work session, but I did want to bring those couple of things to your attention.
Very good.
Thank you. Jeremy?
Save the best for last.
Who says he's last?
So, is this Uno Dos Tres, or?
Well, you know, last name cinco, five, right? So, all right, Veterans Breakfast. Last year, we did it, and we had a really good turnout, and we found that some of the larger corporations needed a little bit more advanced time to get secure donations. So, we were just, I was wondering if it would be okay if that we do another Veterans Breakfast again for employees?
Do you know the date?
Absolutely. I don't. I think we were looking, I think it's on a Thursday.
Usually Thursday morning in November.
Yeah. It was either Wednesday or Thursday we were looking at.
Okay.
So, of the Veterans Week. So, second item is dump trucks. We are preparing in our budget for next year to purchase another dump truck. And we got a call from the vendor that next year, if we don't order trucks by November of this year, that dump truck costs are, one, going to be significantly more due to emission regulations tightening up. Therefore, the cost of the truck is going to significantly increase. What significantly means, I don't know. You didn't go on, but, and also, it's about a year out. So, if we order in November, it's looking like 2024 when we would receive it anyways. So, just looking, we have a main dump truck that we use, and then a little bit smaller dump truck that we use for landscaping that we would like to purchase ahead of time. Now, if you're okay with that, that we can at least get that on the docket for 2024.
Okay.
And then the last thing is, we did speak a little bit about the recycle bins over at the Wadsworth Transfer Station. We did reach out to Wadsworth, and we haven't heard back. I know they're asking for additional signs for us to provide. We've ordered the signs weeks ago, and we're just waiting for the company to be able to make them and get them to us. So, I think, I think that's either happening today or within the next week, we should be getting those signs. And I also did reach out to the EPA. If we were to pull all the bins from the city, we would still be more than, we would be...
City Compliant?
Yeah, with our access goals, so that wouldn't be an issue.
Okay.
If that was so. So, as soon as I hear more from the Wadsworth, from Wadsworth on the additional bins, I'll let you know.
All right.
Okay.
Jeremy, how's the search going for a new solid wage director? Actually, I guess that's a Scott question now.
It's a Scott question. So, I've got three resumes so far. If you're interested, so I will keep you focused on how it goes.
Did you put an end date on the apps? Did you put it? No?
Okay, all right.
Thanks, Jeremy. Thanks, Scott.
Holly, you anything? Stephen? See? He wasn't last.
By the way, Jeremy, November tenth is a Thursday, and November eleventh, I believe, is Veterans Day. That's a Friday.
That's a Friday.
Yeah.
So, Thursday, I think, which...
And the data board is at eight-thirty, so we could do it before the data board, which is in the same room, so.
I just had a couple of things. Paving of the Sixty Public Square parking lot, they should be finishing off the apron today, and then FSA's parking lot will start getting paved. Right now, it's tentatively scheduled for September eighth. So, just so you guys are aware, that we do have a couple other paving projects that are out on the docket now.
Stephen, if you know, how many parking spaces are at Sixty Public Square?
I don't know, but I'm going to guess twenty.
Are there that many?
That many?
Okay.
Yeah, probably ten per side. There might be nine on the side with the ADA compliance parking space, but yeah, we think there's probably twenty.
Okay.
I can confirm that. I think they painted them at nine foot per parking spot, so I can go over and count after it's been completed.
I'm just curious, because I don't know how many people we have that actually work in that building, but I see an awful lot of employees that park around the square.
Yes, that parking lot is definitely not large enough to handle the employees inside that building.
Right, all right.
All right, thank you.
Very good, thank you. All right, anybody else? Holly?
Good.
All right. Bill?
Oh, no, I'm done.
Okay, all right. I guess that's it. Do you have a request for executive session?
Are we doing this first?
Which?
Don't we have a resolution?
Did I skip one?
No.
Oh, that was the Indigent Defense.
Oh, that was in the back.
That's one for next week.
Sorry. I will make a motion to go into executive session to consider the employment of a public employee or official.
I will second that.
Okay, second. Roll call, please.
Sweattick?
Yes.
Hudson?
Yeah, can I ask a question first?
Oh, yeah, sure.
Are we going to continue our ARPA meeting, or is that going to be a separate meeting?
It's a separate meeting.
Well, I was...
Are we just going to come back after executive session?
I was going to suggest that we just continue on and just not close for the day till after the work session, so.
Do you want to keep live streaming?
No, 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 we can close down for now. I was going to announce that, actually, after we did executive session, so.
Yes.
Sorry about that. And yes, executive session. All right, that will be it.
Wait a minute, I need roll call. We didn't do roll call.
Oh, we did roll call.
We just did. I thought you voted.
No, you were seconding.
Oh, seconding, okay, roll call.
Sweattick?
Yes.
Hudson?
Yes.
Hambley?
Yes, sorry for the confusion. We will be, we'll be coming back after executive session, but not live streaming. We have a special work session regarding the ARPA projects. After that, we will then adjourn for the day. So, everybody, have a good day and a good week.
Hey, Bethany.